Hey Chris.
Good evening folks. I have got seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. I notice all members are present. And. Item three on this agenda is executive session to initiate union negotiations. My suggestion is that we postpone that on the agenda. We are not going to be negotiating. Any union discussions, but I think the board may want to. At the end of the meeting, do some. General discussions regarding strategy and that, so. Unless there's objection, we'll wait, we'll pass that on the agenda for now. Here from public. Mr. Cherny, good to see you joining us tonight.
Thank you, Bill.
Any public comments?
Just nice to be here. I think Memorial Day went very nice. Overall, just to get a. See what's going on. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you.
First selectman's briefing, I will be brief. Southworth Drive is ninety nine point five percent done. There's still some minor seeding that yet to be done and grading, but that's done. I guess the good news. Is that it's come in just short of twenty thousand dollars with the bills that we've looked at so far, just short of. Twenty thousand dollars short of what our allotment. Or estimates were all being. As you will probably recall. That steep grant was that the town. Would put up a hundred thousand and the state would reimburse us. Five hundred thousand. The way the grant is read, we have to spend ours first. So the state will be saving that difference, not us. But to get a chance, take a ride up there, it came out really nice. I've got a number of compliments on it. The work has been done or nearly completed on Campered Lane. The new drainage and piping has been installed. Joe tells me this morning, there's still some. Grading, he's going to be bringing in some extra gravel there and doing some grading, but. I inspected it over the weekend and that's seems to be a big improvement and. I'm hoping that satisfies whatever concerns. The association down there had about drainage and that. The two, the crew did a good job on it. There are a couple of things that. I'd like to. Add to the agenda when the time comes. One would be discussing what the board's pleasure is. With setting up interviews for the. Foreman's position with DPW. We forwarded. The board, the applications that we received. And. I'd like to meet on that. Also a discussion that we also something else possible executive session. I forwarded you a draft letter. That I received from town council. Regarding the citizen. Westford Congregational Church issue. So we could possibly do that. We've got a painter working in the building right now. Working on some of the. Cracks and. Some of the water damage that we haven't been able to trace where it came in, particularly. In the registrar's office, apparently it happened a number of years ago. We've been trying to trace it down. We haven't come up with. The source of it, but. He's going to be working here. He's probably got about a week's worth of work.
Bill, Bill, which room was that where it's coming in?
In the registrar's office. As you go in the front door to the right hand side. I'm told it's been like that for a number of years. And what they found out was that the. Well, we found out several things. One's in one instead of screwing. With screws, the. Drywall in place, they hammered nails. That's one of the reasons we're having nails pop all over the building right now. That he's working on, particularly in some of our stairwells. And that. And what I'm also finding out, or he's, he showed me today. Is that. There was little or no taping done. Normally you do a drywall job and you tape it. And paste it. The case, most of the cases that we've looked at right now, it's just been pasted. And that's why we've got some separations going on. Then normally we wouldn't have. But the worst spot Catherine answering question is in the registrar's office. And what I did was I pulled all of our offices and asked them for suggestions where they had. Stains or problems or cracks. And. I've shared that with the painter. I'm going to take it. Luckily, it's not major. There is some major work that's going to have to be done in the exterior of the building. But I think we'll probably be tackling that. After the first July.
Who is the painter?
His name is BJ. Lives in town. He's done some work for DPW before. I don't have his application in front of me. He lives on Barga Road. It's got his own company.
I thought we were going to. Expand. Position in DP, in DPW for this.
Well, some of that work, yes, and that's where I'm thinking the outside work, which is going to be. Pretty extensive. Is going to be started by that person, but we had some money left over in our part time line item. For the selectmen's office. And I thought that was a good resource to utilize getting some of the interior work. I guess there was some. Work that had been done, but never finished. I know there's blotches in most of the hallways and everything. Mostly regarding the popping nails and that. That's where they're addressing that. That's about all I have for. Briefing right now. I'm going to move on. There's a few other things, of course, in the agenda we'll address. But. Item six is accept the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty third.
I sent a correction to those. I sent a correction.
Do you want to make a motion Catherine for the minutes and then we'll address the correction?
Yeah, I don't have the correction sitting in front of me, but um.
I remember.
Yeah, I moved that we accept the minutes with the following correction, which was to. Um. Remove the names much and Zulik from the executive session.
I, I was not attending meetings.
Okay, so you'll abstain.
Right.
I'll second that motion. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With. Roger abstaining. Here from boards, commissions, committees. Seeing none. Old business status of the after school program. I have not heard back from. From the superintendent Sidney Ford on that yet. She last week talked, she was meeting with her council. We're trying to meet with the council to go over it. I'm going to be there tomorrow for another me, excuse me, on Wednesday for another meeting. So hopefully we'll be able to discuss that. Item B is act on the school building committee recommendations. Regarding issuance of an RFP. I did attend their last meeting. And no action was taken on that. They are still working on it. There's a meeting scheduled for five o'clock on the seventh. Which is this Wednesday. And I believe they're in hopes of approving. The RP. And that again will be for architectural. Services. And Catherine, I have expressed to them. Our, our board's. Recommendation about. A clerk of the works and they're on the same page on that.
And a project manager.
Well, they're talking about both either one or the other. I'm not sure. It won't be one person under the same name.
I was, those are two separate roles.
But. It's in discussion. We'll be getting a recommendation from them. And the final decision, of course, is up to our board on that. And the same with item C, consider funding options relating to the. Initiation of the Ashford School Program. We did talk about that last week at their meeting. And I expressed this, the three options that we have. They're, they're thinking they're going to have to wait to get a architect on board. And engineering services before they can get a more specifics of dollar amounts. And again, the range that we've heard is. Started about a hundred thousand dollars and we've heard. Potentially up to a million dollars, so that's going to be. In our considerations for what method we address that at. Item D, consider extension of the Ashford Cemetery mowing contract. Current contract expires June thirtieth. I did send the old contract off the town council. And he did some minor revisions that was forwarded. I'm told to both you and Roger.
Yeah, I read it and it looked good to me.
Can I have?
Before, before making that, well, I'll make the motion that we accepted and then for discussion purposes.
One second.
All right, the motion's been made a second on the floor. Discussion is open.
So I saw that there was writing in red. That was the part that's not complete. That is, I think it was the amount and something else in it. Do you have it in front of you, Bill?
I do. If I remember right, the only amount. What was left in red was item three. Excuse me one second. And that was method of payment. That last meeting we discussed. And. What, what he does is bill in on a monthly basis.
Okay.
And Chris, I thought that was incorporated into the last draft. Do I? Do I know? It's not in the draft I'm looking at.
No, it's in the. It became unread. It's monthly installments. It was. After we talked to Laura, that's how she's been paying him for years.
So item three will indicate. In monthly installments. That were billed on.
Okay.
Anything else, Roger? Any questions on that?
No.
He already did the spring. And did a pretty good job on that. There's a motion on the floor. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Bill, one more thing. I know it's not in this contract, but one of the things I brought up before is that. We need to have some of our cemeteries, in particular. One cemetery limed on a regular basis. Would we be looking to pull together a separate contract for that kind of care? For the cemeteries or is that something? I, I don't think we can count on public works for that.
Why don't I talk to Mr. Kelly? I know he's in this business and does a number of towns. Why don't I ask him to submit us a, an estimate on doing line? Which cemeteries did you have in mind in any in?
I'm going to get the, believe it or not, even though I'm on the cemetery committee, I'm going to get the names wrong. The one that's on forty four. This is South Cemetery. No, it's not. It's a.
South is Pumpkin Hill.
No.
Snow.
Say it again.
Snow. S N O W.
That's the old Hungarian.
It's right next to, yeah, yeah. That one. That's one's in terrible shape.
Okay.
The grass is, is. Virtually gone in a number of areas.
Is there another one?
No, that was the big one. For that particular problem.
All right, I've got to call him anyway to tell him. That we've okayed the contract, so. Why don't I ask him for it? To submit us an estimate on cost.
Yeah, and.
Now, I assume we're looking to do lime and seeding?
Yes, I would think so. You know, what he should be able to do is, you know, he should be, I haven't gone through all the cemeteries yet. We haven't done our review of all of them. We did half of them. More than half and, but he should be able to, if in fact, he's been providing this mowing service, he should have the best. Sense of where the grass is really bad.
I agree. And we can ask him if he said, I mean, when I talked to him about. Snow, I'll ask him if he thinks that any of the other cemeteries need it.
Good, thank you.
And always add those on. I don't know. I'm assuming he'll break down the cost for each of the cemeteries, so.
I would expect that. They should be lined in the spring and the fall.
Okay.
We need reseeding too?
I would think so.
Well, from what he's saying about snow.
Go up to that cemetery and take a look and you'll see.
All right.
I thought your next question is what's he mowing then if there's no grass?
Good, good question.
All right, good point. Now I'll follow up on that. All right. So we take care of D. Ashford Citizen Review Draft of Establishment of Policies. And Procedures Relating to Production. And Content of the Ashford Citizen. Do we want to address that tonight?
I believe we have town council taking a look at them, right?
Yeah, I had, I did send him off. I have not got specifics from him yet. Why don't I carry that for our next meeting? And. Ask him where he is on getting his feedback.
Yeah, I'd like to get, you know, under advisement from him.
Okay.
As to what seems are responsible.
All right, so we'll no take, we'll take no action on that in this time. Moving on, update on transfer station upgrades. Other than a general. Prior. Advisement from the contractor with the new guard station of a delivery between. I believe he said the first and the fifteenth of July. I asked him today for an update and I have not received anything, but. I'll keep you posted on it. We have not finished the widening of the road or the circle at the top. Or the back because we're still waiting from the state. To send us the. Findings from their grinding of another state road, so. That's about where we are. I did get some information. I'm a bit concerned. I wanted to share with you. Both. I stopped in over the weekend and I was talking with Gary and I asked him how things were going. And he pointed out to me that. Our contractor is delivering new dumpsters on site. Now, the existing dumpsters hold forty yards of materials. And the new ones hold thirty two ounces of material.
Thirty two yards or thirty two ounces?
Thirty two, apologies, thirty two yards. Now, we're paying. Two hundred and thirty seven dollars a haul. And change. For each load. I, I never saw anything from them. Advising us that this was going to be a change or whatever, so. I intend to go over this with Chris tomorrow and make a call. And find out. What's going on.
So Bill, what, do we have a copy of the contract that we have with them?
We do. It was originally with Willie Waste. And I believe, what have we got? Another year to go on that, Chris?
Yeah, it expires in June of twenty four.
And can we get a copy of that contract? Because there should be something in it about the size of the containers or whatever or the.
What my thought was, was I was going to make some inquiries. I agree, obviously take a look at the contract. And then forward the contract, everybody, including town council.
Okay.
For a couple of reasons. One, I want to know if we have any. Reciprocating language in there if they're not performing as to what's stated in the contract. And the other is just a heads up to start thinking about a contract. For the future.
Do we have any? Do we have any other options for?
Unfortunately, right now, as far as I know, they're the only game in town, Catherine.
I love a monopoly.
And they know that. I do understand that. Town, since they took over, that did not have a contract. Have seen a considerable increase. In all of their rates. So I'm not optimistic. We're going to, that we're not going to be in the same boat next year, so I think we had to start. Doing a little. Pre-work on that and diligence on that, see if we do have any options. I mean, one of the things that I know our board for years talked about. Was the potential of looking into. Doing our own hauling. And.
Where would we haul to?
Well, we'd have to haul to them, but we wouldn't be paying them. Two hundred and thirty seven dollars a load. And one of the things that we looked at, and I had mentioned this prior and. Incidentally, by the transfer station, I've got a meeting tomorrow with Terry. Wakeman and they're going to set up an agenda for a meeting and I'll keep you posted to that. Catherine, he's, he was out of town for a couple of weeks. That's why there's been a delay on it. But. Years ago, we talked to that, about that, the potential of that. And the only way it made any sense. If we were going to invest in a used truck. That could haul these. Dumpsters would be if we could get another town to go in with us. And, and try to share the cost, but. I think it's with the contract coming up, with the cost escalating every year. I think it's something perhaps we ought to revisit. All right, that's about all I have on transfer station list. Either one of you have any questions on it?
Is, is. Is anything else going on in terms of the stickers, the? How the, are we going to have software that's going to record the stickers? What are we doing with that?
That's one of the main topics that I'm going to ask Terry to put on his agenda. We have got prices of new stickers. We were waiting forever for prices to come in from, from anything printed. And we actually found another, Chris found another vendor that we had used years ago. And we do have a per sticker price in. But it's one of the things that I think the committee has to. But it's one of the things that I think the committee has to look at. And give us some feedback on what their thoughts are.
Yeah, they have to.
What, what I envisioned and when I've been thinking is that we'll come up with stickers. I'd like to set up a process where at least for an initial two week period. We could, we would request that people get their new stickers at the dump. And work out have it perhaps, Chris and I have talked about this, have it on, on a laptop. Where their name and addresses can be checked. And they could be signed off on the laptop. It's a matter of, do we have the personnel that can handle that? Or what it'll take if we have to hire somebody special to come in for a couple of weeks. And obviously for those two weeks, we're going to have to make some special arrangements because there's a potential of backups and whatever when we start issuing these things.
I suspect.
Go ahead.
I was gonna, I suspect that it will be longer than two weeks where that process will be in place because not everybody will come during those two weeks and you're going to have people coming that don't have a sticker and they want to get one there. And that is what we're trying to accommodate. So there's, you're going to have to have that process in place.
Yeah.
I, I find it hard to believe that, that we couldn't have somebody down there that works there be able to follow a simple process to get it into the computer. Get it logged. If they're instructed in how to do it.
Understood.
And you'll have electricity in that building.
In a small shed, yes. The electricity, air conditioning, heating, lighting.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Item six is consider reappointment of our town of Ashford Treasure to a two-year term to expire June thirtieth of twenty-five. For discussion purposes, I'll look for a motion.
I'll do a motion for discussion purposes.
I'll second it.
To approve.
All right, we have a motion. It's been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Now, I
Go ahead.
Uh, we're not saying aye yet.
Oh, yeah. Just doing discussion.
No, this was the motion was being seconded and now we're having discussion.
Yeah.
So with the discussion, the only concern I have is that I've come into the office on three Fridays and I haven't caught up with her yet. So how often is she actually coming into the office?
Well, she's coming in regularly. There's been a couple of emergencies. Last Friday she had a funeral. I didn't, I don't, I don't know the particulars or do I need to know the particulars of it?
No, I don't need.
The, the, it was either the Friday before that or two Fridays before that is the weekend when her horse unfortunately passed away. And she was excused on that. I'm not sure what the other Friday might have been, Catherine, or what the, the reason was, but
Actually, it was before, it was before her horse passed away. And then I made a point of coming in after her horse passed away, since I wanted to express my condolences. And get to know her a little bit better. And then came in again. And she was out. So, um, but just in general, is she available on Fridays in office?
In, in general, she is. And when she can't make it, she communicates that well with me. Or our office. Particularly with Laura. She does have the capabilities and if there's things that are time sensitive, e- even if she can't come in, she does do those from home. I've got no complaints about her whatsoever. In fact, it's been the opposite on, on her performance and her knowledge and her enthusiasm with the job.
So I know that when we were trying to get things together for the budget. That she had to bring data out of the system and into Excel. And presented it to us that way. When she was hired, it was part of the rationale was that she was very familiar with the system that we have. So can you tell me going forward how we're going to be handling things? Is we're going to, are we continued, are we going to continue to have to you know, deal with Excel? Work, you know, workbooks rather than the information directly from the system?
I, I'd be, I'd be glad to invite her in if we want to have a discussion about that with her. I know, I know she's proficient in Tyler. I know that Cheryl had her own method and was was working with different systems that she's been trying to consolidate. And I, I just have confidence in her, that she's doing a good job. But if the board is more comfortable to postpone.
No, I'd like to move the question.
Okay. Roger, anything? Okay. I'm going to move the question. All in favor of moving the question, signify by saying aye.
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 All in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
I would like to have
Do you want me to? Do you want me to see?
I was going to say, I would, I would like to have her come in and clarify for us. I realize that Cheryl's process may have been difficult to follow and certainly she struggled with the system. So I would like to get a better sense and, and I was kind of hoping to talk with her one-on-one. That's one, one of the reasons I went in. To see what the difficulties might be at this point in time and see if we can get to truly using the system the way it's supposed to be used.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think one of the other handicaps was Laura was, was, was not up to date on a lot of the systems and policies that were being perceived. Or followed. And so there's been a transition there, but
And I'm not looking, and I'm not looking to put her on the spot in a public forum. I really just wanted to make sure that I understand what the issues are.
I will, I will, if not Tuesday's meeting or, or meeting after that, I will ask her to zoom in on us.
Okay.
Can go over that. Um, yeah, well, let's, let's follow. We'll go with it that way. Okay, item H, consider reappointment of Gary Brown to serve as Ashford's Connecticut Veterans Fund Representative.
So moved, so moved. I'm delighted that he is our representative.
Soldiers, Sailors and Marine Fund per Connecticut General Statutes and they're all cited.
I'll second that.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, and I thank him for his service, his continued service.
Absolutely. Very dedicated.
And I, I hope that's noted in the comments for, for the minutes.
Please do, Chris. Been re- reappointed with much appreciation from the board for his diligence.
Continued, his continued service.
All right, item nine, new business, Board and Commission Appointments. Conservation Commission, we don't have anybody this time. Economic Development, we have two vacancies. Nobody at this time to recommend. Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. We have nobody to recommend at this time. Zoning Board of Appeals, same situation. Recreation Commission. Chris, I thought we had filled that seat. No?
No.
No? Are we waiting?
Recreation Commission?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're waiting for a recommendation from the commission?
Because I know there's a young lady that wants to join and I think we suggested and I don't remember when it was that she go to their next meeting and I believe they're supportive of it. Do we have any tax refunds?
No.
Thank you. Appointment of the Animal Control Officer. In your package, you should have seen a application from a Jennifer Miller. She is presently the ACO for Wellington and Stafford. She came in last Friday and met with Chris and I. Submitted this application. As you know, our existing animal control officer is Dennis Day. Not the singer, but and we did not reappoint him. And I be quite candid, have not been satisfied that he's had the time to perform the duties as is required. Ms. Miller is fully certified. Seems very competent.
Chris, Chris is, is Jennifer the one that I met?
No, you met Tina.
Yeah. Tina, Tina, I met Tina and I met someone else. Was it Jennifer?
Samantha. Your neighbor's daughter.
That's right.
Tina recommended.
Jennifer. And, okay, so is Tina covering Stafford and Wellington as well?
Tina is no longer working as an animal control officer. She's a dispatcher for the Coventry Police.
Oh, I'd love her. Getting out of, getting out of that. Yeah. Okay, she recommended her?
Yeah.
Very, very good. I make the motion that we approve Jennifer Miller as our Animal Control Officer effective July first, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
We have motion for that second. I am going to draft the letter to Mr. Day. I'll let council take a look at it and I'll share it with both of you before it goes out. Notifying of our actions or intention.
Thank you. I think that was, Bill, I think that was a good move.
It, it was very needed.
Yep.
I have not seen a report in a year and a half. Hey, we don't have to get into it. Yes, I, I agree.
Yeah.
Motion on the floor, it's been made. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. All right. I would ask for a motion to add to the agenda. Discussion of DPW foreman position interviews.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, sorry.
We have motion on the floor and seconding. As you know, we received four applications.
Well, you want us to, we, we have the motion on the floor and seconded it. We need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now.
We have four applications. And my suggestion would be that we do it during the daytime. I understand that the gentleman from Coventry and the gentleman that lives here in town as well as the other two that are presently on the highway department would be available. But I'm open for recommendations from the board.
Daytime works for me. I don't care.
I'm good.
Roger?
I'm flexible.
All right, let me with your authorization, I will try to coordinate a meeting starting at ten o'clock one morning as soon as possible. Obviously, we'll need a couple of days to notice it and everything and go into executive session for those interviews, but I will work on that to, to set up appointments with the four individuals that have responded.
Okay, let's let you know that Wednesday and Friday mornings are the worst for me.
Worst, okay.
I, my best case scenario is I'd be available at ten thirty on those days.
Well, we're going to do it on, on one of those days. Would eleven o'clock be more comfortable for you?
Works fine.
Okay. All right, I will work on that and and let you know. Now, on the interviews, I, unless there's objection, I also intended to invite Joe to sit in. I don't know what your thoughts are.
Um. And the purpose of Joe sitting in is what?
He has the expertise. If particularly questions come up regarding the position or existing duties and everything, I think. I mean, we've got a familiarity with him, but I think he's got hands-on knowledge of that.
Okay, that's good.
No problem.
No problem.
All right, very good. I will proceed and do that.
And now we have an executive session you'd like to take us into or?
I think it would be a good idea to talk about it. We've gone into executive session prior to this regarding this for potential litigation.
Okay, so I make a motion that we go into, that we add an executive session for potential litigation to the agenda?
And that will include the board. John, can you do that? This is going to probably be a short one.
Yeah, so there are a couple of ways you can do this. I mean, it's just the, you know, the, the, those of you in Bill's office, Catherine, Christine and myself, there's no one else on. I can certainly pause the recording. If you would like to take the additional precaution of going into a breakout room, we can do that. But just, you know, pausing the recording is enough. And I could, I will take out my headphones and, and you know, Catherine or Chris, you can just wave frantically at the screen when you want me to, to put my headphones back in.
All right, so, um, Bill, we don't have a second yet, but for the purpose of this discussion, we want to take in the three selectmen. Anybody else?
I think that's all that's needed.
Okay. So we need a second to go into the executive session.
Pleasure.
Yeah. Rob, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Right after this will just be a journey. So very good. Have a good one.
And I can't remember, do we have to vote to go in? I think we do.
You do.
Yes. All in favor of going into executive session with those indicated?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it is ten thirty, I'm sorry, seven thirty-five session. Thank you very much.
Okay, I've, I've just restarted the recording.
Very good.
Thank you. I've got seven forty-two and I will entertain a motion.
A motion to, a motion to adjourn.
Oh, did we talk about any agenda items on the upcoming selectman meeting?
Well, we talked, we talked about a couple of them during the meeting.
All right.
Potential union discussion.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll second that motion.
We are adjourned at seven forty-two.
Aye.
John, thank you very much.